What's up Freeport? City Councilman Mari Morada here. About to start this council meeting here in a bit. Just getting ready. I'm not gonna get it over with yet. It's been acting bad. But, uh... Just gonna...
There he is right there kid.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the agenda of the regular meeting of Freeport City Council. This Monday, July eighteenth, 2022 at six P M. Let's please, uh, put phones on silent for vibrator. Uh, I would declare that there is a floor present that all notices have been, uh, legally posted pursuant to the Opens Meetings Act. At this time, I'd ask for all rise from Mr. Captain Police, uh, need some information or proceed with the pledge.
Keep by your heads. Heavenly Father, you have once again graced us with a glorious day. A day in which to serve you and an opportunity to serve our fellow citizens in the city of Freeport. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting. That you bless each and every employee, official, and representative here tonight, citizen, um, that have come before the, the city, they hear the city business. Lord, we ask, ask that you guide our thoughts, guide our words, and, um, keep us humble, forthright, and always mindful of your will. Lord, we ask all of this in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, the flag of the agency of the league, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, Mayor Seale. At this time in the, uh, agenda, it is time for system comments. We have a number of them, uh, just remember folks that there is a four-minute time limit. And please, let's do our best to be courteous and respectful. Uh, with that, Mr. Casal.
Good evening everybody. Yeah, last week I asked for the visitor's card for Freeport, um, with the name of the council. So if you guys would at this time would you hand me your visitor's card?
I have.
Mr. Casal, uh, please insert yourself comments. Please sit back and look at it.
And I don't have a card on myself. The last time I was here, I also mentioned a time extension for public, uh, debate, of public comments. So, I did ask for, um, four minutes or five minutes at least per subject. Did anybody entertain that situation at all? No, couldn't I? Okay, anyway, last week I attempted to show some pictures to the council about illegal what they're doing in terms of...
Mr. Casal, Mr. Captain Seale, sir. Last time you mentioned that word, I told you that it's not appropriate in this setting, or in any setting, and served given the partial time. Please have a seat. If you want to get the pictures from Mr. Captain after meeting, then do it right, sir. So we will conduct ourselves accordingly with respect. Much answered. Thank you for your cooperation. Manny Rose.
Good evening. Number one, a pleasure to be here.
You know the numbers, they just came about second.
Captain, we're not united in two countries. One accepts abortion, one don't, so we're not united, so we can deal with that issue also. Well, my issue today is about the three infraction, three harassment, and I came to that city, man, and you were right there about the police harassment of my family. Mr. Bass, I also sent you a D bill every last one of y'all about their jail prison. Now, one of y'all called or gave no kind of response on how safe the people be. So at this point, I got three video of the show harassment. And he knows. I asked y'all to do something. Two thousand and five, I sued the city for beating my family. Two thousand and ten, I sued this city for beating my family. You got the law firm that was sat there and said it's okay for black folks to be attacked in this community. They were the law partner. And you turn around and hire the same people that stole twenty million dollars from us as our legal counsel to the city. Well, when we going forward in this city, because that basically we going backwards. Okay? Danny is not qualified to run this from these stations based on his hateful people. Black people. Everybody in this city will stare. Okay? He's not qualified to do that job. When is the city gonna find the chief of police? Because at this point, no one is safe in this city. If they, the officer said itself, you need to look at that video. Oh, I just pulled cards off on my infraction so I could see the picture of the picture. So he admit he's arresting the citizens in the city of Freeport, Mr. Mayor. So what is this y'all's gonna do about the harassment of this police department? We had this problem in two thousand and five. We had this problem. Y'all need to do something about it. Y'all really need to do something about it. Because no one have the nerve to fear in this city, Mr. Mayor. The lies that's coming out of this council, no different than you about it coming up empty. It's gotta have transparency in the city. All Texas counties in cities like this, and it's wrong. We trust you people, and our family lies. Do something about this, Jimmy. I'm here, Mr. Bass, because the next call is to get the feds in here to take over the city. And I'm pushing hard for the feds to come in here. Because as long as it's playing out on social media on what's happening to my family, I will not be beating again in this city by these police. And I mean it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Reyna.
Mayor, your council members. My name is Sam Reyna. And I reside in two thousand and two, North Avenue, G, Alton and Alton. Welcome aboard. Mr. Casal did review the executive session. Seems like it's under review at every meeting, not only regular meetings, but special meetings also. Each gets evaluated once a year. If his performance is not up to par, bring it up then. But this has been going on now for what, six, seven years in a row? It's always under review. It's always on, wait till each has reviewed once a year. If they have problems with it, bring it up then. But bringing it up, it... Councilor Penya and Councilor Moradya have an agenda. Having a agreement, but I will feel that it appears to myself that they have an agenda against President Mariah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Dancing, I'm sorry. Mrs. Dancing? Just make sure we carry our phones, please.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Longy, I'm CEO of the Freeport Free South branch. In reference to the open Records Act, I would like to suggest that independent inquiry to the Brass Test Three A Agreement be moved to an open session. The people of Freeport need to see the full report disclosed and voted on. Um, furthermore, the citizens of Freeport funded the investigation and need to know the contents. The contents. I recommend all citizens at Freeport Crescent and online be able to vote on this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sacramento.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sacramento. The Council said we're west tenth street in Freeport. And, uh, we have an ongoing Main Street bump, which is a commendable thing. Uh, this is something we tried almost twenty years ago. And the Main Street is very successful. There's a whole bunch of cities that went through this, but they had the advantage that the town, town is not, I mean, at the end of the line. Their city, their downtown areas are in the middle of the city, but, uh, uh, as we all know, the city of Freeport was founded in nineteen twelve by the Freeport Southern Company. And the port made a major contribution to building Freeport into the whole surrounding area. And I think this current project on the agenda, this PRP KDC, looks like a project as a potential to, uh, to continue the economic development that we want to see. So I would encourage council to, uh, approve that unanimously and with, uh, very little, uh, discussion. It's a note breaker for Freeport. Thank you, I'll bless y'all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matt Morris, that says general comments, but also has agenda items seven twelve. You want to speak now, sir?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members.
Good evening.
My name is Jordan Matt Morris, and I reside at seventeen twenty-two North Avenue. I have been unable to attend the last two council meetings since then, but I was able to watch the city's live stream. What I saw was disturbing to say this. I was unable to enjoy pizza or cold beverage of choice speech illness, but probably would not have been able to keep it down if that transpired. The disturbing part of all of this is that one council member can hijack his city government for his own personal agenda and not the wishes of his constituents. I committed to the mayor in trying to remedy the behavior of this council member. There is a quote that I've heard inappropriate for this person, and I'm paraphrasing when I say this. Some men aren't looking for anything logical. They can't be reasoned or negotiated. Some men just want to watch the world burn. That is what this council member is doing with the city. He tries to say otherwise, but all of his actions and actions prove this point. The amount of disinformation he provides while sitting in the council chambers and on social media is disturbing. He will wellfully and knowingly say something that is blatantly false, then shut down the person proving that this is blatantly false, so they cannot continue with proof. Yet, if he does not get to finish his false statements, he then blames others for cycling his false and con- condescending version of transparency. He's bringing a national political way of disinformation here to our local government. It is time for this to stop. We residents of Freeport have real issues that need solving and cannot afford to have this time wasting by adding unnecessary items to council agendas that do not have supporting documentation, or all to see, or have no chance of giving a return without encouraging significant penalties for the city residents who are on the trash service. He had a chance to vet this trash truckers contract and company, but shows not to intend to be getting on board. Now, all of a sudden, it's a bad deal for the residents. Nothing has changed with the RFP and that even separate you, both of the minority residents showing dislike. Those same residents dislike the previous service because of the lack of old trash pickup. They will never be satisfied unless it's done, and yet he continues to bring this up on the agenda of the council meetings. Another issue I find disturbing is the same council members asking for and receiving the water and waste on the records of residents and businesses. And then asking for this to be on the agenda. I believe that it is not city council business to have these records unless there is an issue that provides us some litigation. No other council member has asked for this, to my knowledge. This is a vague overreach by this council member and repeats of big brother governments. I'm also tired of seeing the same council members bash the city executive staff. We as residents understand that you dislike them for some unknown reason, but we will continue to eat the life in soccer for this county, which is repeated non-truth based founded attacks that appear highly weekly in council chambers and in the newspaper and weekly on social media. It is too vast to stop. My last comment is for our ward council member. I did not vote to make you a proxy for the ward A council member. I voted for you as a representative to speak on my behalf for issues within the ward I live in and within the city itself. I am appalled that you continue to co-sponsor items on the agenda when it comes to providing comments on said agenda items. Your usual line is just set up. You're running on a generational change for Freeport platform, but I have yet to see. My expectation for council members to be professional and considerate of all residents and city staff. It is time for you to generate your own personal thoughts and comments for the entire ward and the city of Freeport, sir. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. The rest, excuse me, the rest of the, uh, folks that want to speak, if you've signed up for specific, uh, agenda item requests, so we'll proceed accordingly. Oh, please. Oh, ladies first.
Hello, good evening. Melanie Olden, nine twenty-two West Fifth Street. Um, as I mentioned before, I have attended city council meetings for about nine years, uh, since I moved to, uh, Freeport. I've gone to most of the EDC meetings. And, uh, so I always have a routine. I look at the agenda, read through the supporting documents. And last city council meeting, I mentioned that the eleven items that Mr. Penya, Mr. Moraya have put on there for those supporting documents. So I looked today and there's two hundred and ninety-one, which is to the other extreme. Uh, they put on there a hundred and twenty-one page, the Freeport Personnel Handbook. I had to skim through all that at the bottom. They have four pages highlighted, I assume that they want to talk about. But it's, it's a strategy to, for us citizens to give up and it's also, there are eleven items. There, it doesn't say like on the other gen-, uh, supporting documents, item eleven, item fourteen. It's very confusing for me, and I've looked at many a time at supporting documents. It took me an hour and a half to try to skim through what Mr. Penya, uh, put as supporting documents. So there's gotta be a happy medium there. And what Mr. Matt Morris said, uh, he said much better than I could, but, um, my ward A, uh, councilman, um, we used to talk, we used to visit, but as soon as I disagreed with any of his opinions and cut off all conversation, I think the councilmen should listen to everybody in their ward, even if they disagree with some of these issues. And, uh, I've just been very frustrated when Mr., when the councilman and ward A and I used to, you know, ask me to meet down at the beach and talk, I guess he didn't want to be seen with me, but we'd have conversations and quite frankly, he would say things like, I'm gonna figure out a way, one way or the other, to get rid of Brimage, Felty, Mayor Bass, and Holman. And I would say that in court of law. And he also would say, when I was president of EDC, it was like every single EDC board was like herding a bunch of stray cats. So when I got on EDC, I said to Mr. Penya, I am not a stray cat, you don't have to hurt me. But, um, I, I hope that Mr. Moraya, who I, like I said, I respect, will start reading, thinking on his own. I don't know if you read through those two hundred and ninety-one documents that were put in, but some of them are very misleading, and I feel that we need to get back to the positive business of the city. For instance, you know, the city has worked hard on about fifteen, sixteen million in grants to work on our wastewater treatment plant and our lift station, but every week, certain councilmen bring out stuff and try to discredit everybody in civil leadership. It's not stopped. We gotta move ahead and move forward and, uh, do some positive things for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hayes.
Good night, he's four one four, Mr. Harper.
Good evening.
I was appalled at the stuff that Council Penya put on Facebook about the city. I know the city manager is professional. Uh, he's a very good city manager. We've seen a lot of, he's seen two of them. Mr. Camp is a really good manager. The defamation he gets him on Facebook, all the lies that he spread, he just killed me. You know, he's a family man, he's got a wife, he's got kids here, they go to church, and he has to face all that, all these allegations. Mr. Penya needs to know Facebook is a devil when it comes to, I could say stuff like, two of our council members are gay lovers, but I don't have to believe it. And he's in that situation right now. He just says whatever he wants to. Thank you.
Look at that face, Jimenez, office comments. Yes, sir.
For the record, this man said something that was racist. He just said something that was racist about gay people. You need to check that, because if that man's sexual orientation is different, he had no right to bring that up. That is wrong. You just told him about Mexican people, you need to address that about that. Because if what he said was racist, was sexist.
But he not saying it too.
So, wait a second, ladies and gentlemen.
I said it to him.
Manny, your time is up. Mr. Casal, please sit down, so you have your opportunity.
I have a little trouble hearing. The sound system in here has been bad for forty minutes.
What's your question, sir?
Yeah, the question is, um, not a loss, so, yeah, tell me what you, why, why couldn't I show the victims to the council?
Mr. Casal will speak to you, or the city manager will speak to you after the meeting to explain the issue. We've had to address it twice, this is the second meeting that I've had to address your comments. Okay, sir, so we will discuss it afterwards. We're not gonna take up too much time to do that. In regards to the other accusation, I did not believe it was a specific accusation, uh...
Can you tell me if it's not germane to the council?
No, I'm not saying that, sir. I'm saying the way you expressed it was improper.
Well, no, I didn't, I never mentioned...
Mr. Casal, we will speak to you after the city council meeting. I'm gonna take this up if you'd like to. I'll wait around, you wait around, I'll talk to you personally. But this is twice we've had this discussion. All right, any other sense of comments? Very good. We'll go to presentation announcements. Uh, number one, this presentation is Employee of the Month for the month of June. Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Manny, that is your first warning, sir.
Thank you. It is my privilege. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is one of the things that I look forward to, and we have a great employee of the month recognized tonight. Uh, you know, many of us as city employees are targets of many things, and this lady in particular, um, unfortunately is a very dirty job, and, um, we have some, uh, some guests that are residing in the trees in City Hall for the past probably three months. And, um... And I'd like to recognize Patricia Castillo, if you'd like to come. She was actually nominated by her supervisor, Sally Bailey. Um, I, I would like to recognize this, this Castillo, continuing to supervise a level of service that exceeds expectations on a daily basis. Bubble Works Department at Times is a thankless job, and this Castillo's... Her responsibility includes beach better control, making of city facilities and landscaping, her responsibility, teamwork, quality of work, and initiative in the Bubble Works Department are top notch, and do not go unnoticed, you're proud to have her on our team, is what, um, is paid to go. But that's not what she's being recognized for tonight. At City Hall, we have, um, some protected birds that, that reside in the trees as you enter City Hall. And every morning, uh, for about the last five months, it became between about seven o'clock and eight o'clock in the morning, you find Patricia, um, in her gloves and her hat and, uh, the hose, uh, cleaning the bird, uh, what the birds leave for her. And as a result of that, there's been a fire here of those birds on many occasions, and, you know, it is a, it is a thankless job, and it's something that, uh, we really appreciate, um, to make the City Hall a feeling, um, place for citizens to come to. Um, so with that, I'd like to recognize this for you the month, um, for the month of June. Thank you.
And Ms. Castillo, before you, uh, sit down, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, when the pandemic first started, we were all shut down and all the others shut, uh, there was no need for lawyers, and it might be mistaken now that you don't need lawyers out, but I took the opportunity to come out and work with these fine folks, and I got to work with Ms. Castillo. And I like to think that's pretty tough, because she ran me to the ground. She had a fantastic job, so I salute you, man, and you awarded us honor. Thank you.
Thank you. She does have a, while it's been her primary responsibility, that's her job, Adrian Martinez and Sherry Cruz have filled in with our vision, and I would thank them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next item that we had is presentation of third quarter investment report. Mr. Gilbert.
Um, I'd like to recognize, uh, the mayor recognize, uh, my director Kathy Zell for the finance report.
Ms. Castillo, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is the quarterly investment report for the quarter beginning January twenty twenty-two. As of that quarter, our portfolio contains twenty-four point seven million dollars. Sorry. OPEC, nine point three, it's in the bank, and then fifteen point four is in the U of N. The interest rates are starting to go up, that's still nothing to worry about, but most cases we're close to twenty percent. So...
You anticipate another, I mean, I know it's up to the Fed, so you anticipate another rate increase or not rate increase?
Everything was either right, it's just always.
Counsel, any questions for this presentation? Thank you very much, ma'am. Next item up, uh yeah, next item up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Uh these items, procedure, de-routine nature may be acted upon in motion with three items. The first consideration of possible action approval of a number of city moments, uh city meeting minutes for July fifth, July seventh, and July eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Second is consideration of possible action, appointing a cancer and deputy city attorney for prosecution. And number five is consideration of possible action, approving resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two seven five five, appointing a person to senior, uh appointing a person to be senior citizens committee. Counsel, your pleasure.
So item of four. No, I was just wondering, so the deputy uh city attorney, which is Mr. uh, sorry, sir, what's your name?
Oh, this is Olson Nelson. This is the inner deputy regional minister, beating back, this is Pat Taylor. He would be nothing responsible except to do class C, which is what the city of Freeport issues is on the class C misdemeanors, financial, uh fine. Um and this is uh Pat Taylor that we're looking at. He used to uh do this to the city of Freeport when uh Mr. Shaw was the regular city attorney.
Okay, so he's not from Olson and Olson then?
No, sir, he's uh used to, we're operating in Olson and Olson, so the gap stuff just fill until they already able to go through the process on a full time and have city attorney. We don't handle prosecution services in Olson and Olson, so we kind of put our noses together trying to figure out who's the best option in short terms.
According to the charter, um the city attorney can recommend a deputy city attorney for this purpose, which is my favorite.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the detention and. Item three, four, five, there's a motion, Council Brimich, uh approve three, four, five, is there a second?
Mayor, I will, I will second it, but for the record. I will second it, but for the record, I would like to say that Mr. Croffey is the person appointed to the senior citizens commission.
Anybody have her mother, Francis Croffey is a nursery teacher in Brimich? Very tough, tough. Very good, yes, it's uh Mr. Croffey, we welcome her. Uh there is a second, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, all opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Uh next, we're going to council business record session, item number six. It is six thirty P M. I will open a public hearing, a public hearing for benefit of the being used in consideration of possible action, approving ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two six six eight regarding commercial building inspection. This is Roman and or Mr. Kelly.
Uh yes, Council, this is an agenda item that had been before you a couple times in the past, a couple times in the past. Um it has not changed, but we did wanna give um the public some additional opportunity um as council requested to make comment on this particular ordinance.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, uh it is uh your city council, so it's subject to your uh uh request or if you have any comments in council this time, bring some comments up yourselves. Uh we have Miss Oldham that would like to speak on council item number six, Miss Oldham?
Um I think I'll pass.
Pass. Seven. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Rollerson.
I'd like to speak on the commercial buildings downtown, this is where the relevies that we have. I'd like to speak on the commercial buildings that we have downtown, even the relevies that's in the city. There's an ordinance for state checks that everything must be inspected, mostly in the city that anything that's that the public use. Or in Brimich.
Hold on one second, hey, that's something that we can.
Yeah, that's me checking that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
But anyway, we have a problem with these commercial buildings. I'm looking downtown, okay? Downtown, we got a lot of these buildings that's owned by people. But where is the traffic going into these buildings? Most of these buildings are owned by people that have construction junkies downtown. They have no, no life going into these buildings, just owned by people that's killing Freeport. We gotta realize these buildings are old. They're not gonna put the money in it because they figure that wasting their money downtown. Those two buildings I don't wanna buy, to start a business downtown, why should I take my inheritance and invest it downtown in Freeport when there's no traffic going up into the commercial buildings? I agree with Miss Roman. Every last building in this city that cannot pass inspection, the city need to tear them down. We don't have to keep going through this. You got landlords ain't fixing nothing, but they're there running Judge uh Mahler's court over here and get you thrown out because you complaining about electric or anything other, any other problems. Same thing with it. We need better buildings and we need safer roads. And Miss Roman, I ain't the one pushing the issue. You need to make sure everybody fits these places while you're in the state.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in public? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Melanie Oldham, again, um I have some friends on the Main Street Committee and you know, we had a committee come down from Austin to look at all the buildings downtown and it's true, a lot of those buildings have been at the life of it for years. You know, there's some that could be uh remodeled up to code or for safety, you know, safety's the issue, that's what this ordinance is about, safety. But again, not picking on my councilman, Award A, he owns the only state historical building downtown and the bricks are falling off, it's a danger and you know, why negotiate these buildings? Uh Mr. Penia, you know, you've been in that building since twenty fifteen. If we can't even protect a state historical building, which used to be the Sulphur Building and the Bank Building. Um but I think this ordinance will be a start to make sure, check out these buildings downtown and other areas, uh they are safe. I agree with Manny enough, what you said.
Thank you. Hold on one second, let's do the public hearing. Yeah, let's see, anybody else in public? Council Penia.
Well, I didn't wanna really respond to a resident on the. I've had this conversation with other residents. Some of the buildings downtown, they're sort of, Freeport National Bank building, now that is a very uh historic and unique brick and that is something that is only able to uh be produced in bulk and uh the order that I would have to have would be uh the scope by time that I would be in several parts on that board. There is a big run that they will have enough to uh contact me with that in place, but more importantly, I already have an engineer for work on that particular brick aside and it is safe and it's current condition, although I'd like to prepare to do that later. But uh I'm asking up these, I was probably not in twenty fifteen, but in March of twenty sixteen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any other councilman?
Mayor, I'd also like to go ahead and um comment on the ordinance itself.
Yes, sir.
I think the crux of it here in the last go around was um on page. Guess third page of ordinance or uh section six, first page of six, second, third, uh fourth. Uh just read it here, shall be unlawful for a person to rent a business in a commercial non-residential building prior approval of the city official, after extension. This section applies to kind of business under the following circumstances. Item four here, um number four, makes sense to me. Because it follows in line with what we had already, we have already. There's a continues of previous use. Um if there's an interruption of six months or more, then extension should be avoided. Something to make sure it's safe, but on the other three, the change of ownership of the building, that doesn't make any sense unless it's been vacant for six months. The change of tenancy of the building, if vacant or if, or if it's been used, if vacant for six months or uh being used for something totally different, that that should afford any extension. And of course, that's a recent, recent change of ownership. But otherwise, it is the same business and it hasn't been vacant for less than six months. If it's been occupied for less than six months, um excuse me, if it's been vacant for less than six months, then it should go ahead and forfeit being inspected. One for redundancy of all of it, and secondly, uh for the language. I think it's the additional burden on any, any owners who are just trying to use the same building for the same, same purposes, an office, a restaurant, and um and otherwise.
So Council Penia, uh you're okay with three and four, does it put your license changes to number one?
Wanted to.
Wanted to, you wanted to put a time?
Yeah, if it's vacant for uh more than six months, then absolutely have an extension. And if there's a change of tenant, because it's been vacant for six months, same, same to be true. Those are the only issues I have with your ordinance beyond that, I'm having any motions to pass or not.
I do think, ma'am, presumably, uh, yes, sir, thank you. Other councils, do you have any comments?
My only comment is, is on number one, a simple change of ownership of the building. If I had this building and it was a pizza parlor and I decided to sell it to Mr. Penia and he continued to run it as the pizza parlor, I'm, I'm not sure that that should require fifty inspection. I do, I do follow, I do agree with it if I shut down the pizza parlor and in six months he decides to take over and do it, then, then by the means of, you have a rebuttal with that.
Just like, yes, so whenever I have business changes ownership, especially with health licenses, it's actually a safe requirement that you have to do an inspection, which is a requirement for health establishment. A regular one does say office establishment, so the requirement for the establishment, the law and the law. Is the licenses do not transfer with that one?
If so, if I had a.
I got a pizza for pizza, still have to have an inspection.
If it was just a office building and I was selling it to him and he's gonna use it for an office building, then it would not be required by state. If it had something in there about, if it's required to be done by state, then, then we could do it, it's not required, but it's not.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Council Penia, Council Penia. Anybody else? Council Ry, anything you want to talk about on this matter?
I was gonna thank you for something that.
Understood, yes. Uh Council Brimich, anything you need to say?
That's from good, thank you.
All right. Very good. Anybody else out in public? If not, it is now six forty P M. Betty please reflect that I closed the public uh hearing section of this matter on item, item number six, and I will ask for a motion. May I ask? Yes.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance uh with the changes that we discussed in the open session, that wrote, Council Penia, myself.
Do you would like to, you guys heard?
Sorry, my, my, it's. I wrote down some of those we were talking about, all the changes, or at least discussed. I thought everyone was on that, right? First one is uh just being consistent about the change of ownership of the building you take it for six months prior, or it's otherwise a part of my state law. The second one would say the same thing, change of tenant, in the building you take it for six months prior or six months prior by state law. That way it gives staff, right, go in there and certify, like, or other things that they want to do, doesn't.
Thank you, sir. Council Penia, would that be your motion?
That is uh one decision, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to Council Penia's motion?
That's it.
We have a second from Council Penia. Uh any further discussion needed? Counsel? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Betty please reflect, motion passed, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Item number seven is another public hearing, it is now six forty-two. Betty please, uh let the record reflect that I'm opening a public hearing on request for a tax abatement from P R P K D C Freeport Development LLC located in reinvestment zone twenty twenty-two dash zero one, city of Freeport located within the boundaries of the city. Mr. Elliott Hughes, would you please come and have sit in a hot seat where Miss Roman will sit? Actually, let's go. All right, Mr. Hughes is the representative uh from uh P R P or from Volkswagen. Very good. Um we have now opened a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I have Melanie, I think. Yes. Melanie, do you have any comment, ma'am? And then Miss Manor, you're up. Manny?
Uh Melanie Oldham, yes, I, um, I was on EDC for a while and we had a lot of discussion on this and I would say ninety-nine percent of EDC strongly recommended to the city council that this is a good deal for the city of Freeport. Tax abatements are kind of difficult to understand, but at first, to be honest, I had a few questions, but I looked into it and the uh there are so many benefits of Volkswagen coming into this town. Uh not only will they bring in jobs, which I know certain people argue about it, but you know, a hundred and thirty-one jobs um to three hundred, but some will be contractors, you know, some will be temporary, but the business will be coming in, all these truck drivers are gonna be buying meals and restaurants here in Freeport. There are so many other side benefits and other than a couple leaders, I've heard one hundred percent support for Volkswagen to come to the city of Freeport and be part of our, our core, core Freeport. And I hope they come, there's a lot of support from, there's only a few people that are very vocal and arguing about it that I can tell you from us, we're ninety-nine percent of the posts who would like to see Volkswagen here.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh Mr. Manor, hold on, Mr. Rollerson, you're up, sir. No, Mr. Manor, please wait. Hands off. Don't buy Rollers. No, I'm not.
Okay. I'm not against Rollers. I'm not against, hopefully it's coming to make a better decision, very tough, a lot against that. What I'm against is population deduction. That's what I'm against. Because the population is deducted, it's dwindling since nineteen ninety-seven, Freeport is dealing with constantly decline in population, but we ninety percent and grow an inch. See the difference? The problem is, is we got more growth in jobs than we have people to build jobs. Okay? Number one question I ask is where is the environmental impact study for B W? Every corporation that builds on anything around it's supposed to give an environmental impact study. The city haven't shown the environmental impact study and I saw that to Betty for that environmental impact study. She said they're not saying they don't have one, so how's the city allowing this to be built without getting any environmental impact study? And that takes ten years for an environmental impact study to be done to be here. If you don't come with environmental impact study, what it shows Freeport to build. Okay? For Freeport don't have an environmental impact study because I've been fighting this case for ten years with Port of Freeport by the east end. There is no environmental impact study in the state requires an environmental impact study and the federal government requires an environmental impact study. And the city should comply with environmental impact study based on everything you don't as anything that's been happening in the city. So I think the environmental impact study, well, we put a part for a force, okay? We need that environmental impact study. For invested money, where is the environmental impact study?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Manor?
George Manor, seventeen twenty-two, over there, you know. Um I stated in the last um hearing that we had about this, um we need to welcome a B W with four cars. That's the only way we're gonna grow is if we start bringing in all businesses and bringing people to come into our city, which we never get more. That's the only way we're going to grow, is if we start bringing in all businesses, who will, and bringing people to come into our city, which will never get more, uh, retail, we need to welcome them. Um, I know people are against tax abatements, but there's every city in the state of Texas uses, uses them to bring businesses, and we should be, no different. We should be welcoming B W with open arms to, to our city.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else out in public? Not counsel? Mr. Kelty?
Thank you, mayor, um, this is, I am obviously the council I've seen before, um, presented on May twenty-sixth, um, at which time we took action, um, to adopt an ordinance, um, we were advised that if we done it properly, and that's why it's back before you all today, back before the public to give them another opportunity to make sure that we do things right. Um, I would say, though, that in regard to that previous action, even though we done it properly, um, it was provided to Volkswagen, so I would recommend approval of this as a, as a ratification of the previous, um, ordinance. I think that there are the issues with the city's credibility and integrity of everything that I did otherwise.
Counsel, any further questions or comments, Mr. Councilman Pena? Anybody else in council that have any questions or comments? Mr. Robertson, you've already used your time, sir, but it, no, I tell you what, it's in a public hearing, come on. But, once we get back into agenda, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we'll stick with that.
I agree with you when you said one thing, uh, it was great, uh, you know, the thing, but everything that has come to this city haven't grown since. You notice, everything coming to the city have not grown in population, everybody moving out of people. I got three hundred sixty text messages from people that grew up here, just for the police stop in there, saying they never move back to Freeport, because Freeport is not trying to move on. So, we keep piling entries in here, keep on pushing the nonsense, but there is a systemic problem with growth in the city of population. It's a problem. And then we want to talk about tax evasion, for Freeport is a farm trade zone, period, they are not taxable on the federal or state law. Because we going through this right now, with this federal case against the city of Freeport and the Army, uh, for the engineering, with the Department of Homeland Security. So at this point, the city itself, you can't sit there and say that y'all can't have these studies, y'all got to have those studies, and I'm gonna push for those studies, just like I did with the port. I'm gonna push for those studies, for some fact is, we're not doing this to a right, let's not run out here and do this, every time we run out there and do something, citizens pay for it in the long run. Y'all should know that by now, we always end up spending lots of billions and hundreds of thousands of dollars in this thing, over nonsense, then in the long run, everybody discuss, like, twenty million dollars for water, what? See, we always throwing money out there with schemes, and in the long run, we always lose, that's this.
Thanks, sir.
I would also add that, um, under their application, um, P R P K D, P R P K D C, um, has agreed, granted the abatement to create twenty-eight and a half million dollar worth of taxable value, um, in the city, as well as higher than a hundred and thirteen, uh, full-time employment accounts either directly, uh, by Volkswagen or by their third-party, um, uh, control. That would work full-time in the city, um, in addition to that, they would be creating, um, in addition to two hundred sixty to three hundred new jobs in the city overall, in connection with this project.
Thanks, sir, counsel, any comments?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, we be abundant there. Say Freeport should be attracting Volkswagen, and so many other businesses, we want to definitely send the message out, that we are open for business. But what we are not is being open for, being a competitor, uh, not having a worldview of what is being presented to us. And that for that matter, the council sharing, and helping to explain that information, that's the best. So, to touch on the three comments that were made by, um, the residents and also Mr. Kelty. On May twenty-sixth, we were advised, probably not seeing it in the plan, but we didn't, uh, hopefully took it not mind. I don't want to say that this is a ratification of, uh, of that ordinance that we passed on the twenty-sixth, because it was a different circumstance. At the time, we were led to believe that if we don't do this, they're not coming, and I, I've seen too many, um, pieces of information and conversations, very far to understand that Volkswagen have already, contention is strong, and, uh, so when we talk about a question of integrity and credibility, I ask, who was telling us that information at the time, if it was true and valid, that's fine, but if it has evolved, because we don't live in a vacuum, we consider this. Well, Volkswagen is a, is a business, the city of Freeport is a business, and the circumstances for the city can change just as much as the circumstances for Volkswagen. And so if the circumstances change for Volkswagen, then it may be, maybe it's happened, and maybe that is happening, and they are in fact here. Then we got to make sure that we make decisions based on the change of circumstances. That said, so long as there's true contingencies in place, that we have, and they are met, that we can, prior to less voting on it, and signing away, uh, too many dollars worth. Um, I have a hard time wanting to move forward with this, so I'll say this, you know, we're looking at John E. Trump tonight, and, um, Councilman Kane had asked for three estimates, before we would decide how we would spend potentially fifty thousand dollars. And to give additional context, even tonight, we had this all here earlier, speaking about supporting documentation, to simply just talk about it, something. Not talk about passing a potential two billion dollar new ball, but just to talk about various topics. And so here we are tonight, what I've been asking for is the supporting documentation, that helps us to understand the transaction, to understand the numbers behind it, the economics behind it, and help us to assess if in fact we really do, if in fact we really do need to write a tax paper. And we had to see that, and so when we have no supporting docs, I'm not sure why we're voting on it, we have to comment on it, in its fullest capacity, in its prudent capacity. And so, you know, we're going to talk about some other stuff here tonight, under a hundred thousand dollars, and it's one, I hope that we're going to be responsible as well. Um, if we're looking to, uh, basically forego, up to two million dollars for the next ten years.
Thank you, sir, any other council?
Mayor? Yes, uh, as a liaison to the E D C, I was in on a majority of not all of the meetings I've ever held, with the E D C and Volkswagen. This tax payment was served to us by the E D C, which was voted on, if I'm not mistaken, unanimously. You were there, you were in that, uh, uh, circumstances were, as I shared, too. So it was voted unanimously on by the E D C to come to council, and to be voted on. We'll have this, this discussion on the scope, it once again was voted unanimously. One thing I will point out in, in this, it says financial impact is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars per year, potential future revenue, as far as taxes. I'm not a math magician, someone that's got to learn. Seventy-one times seven is one million point one nine seven, it's not two million, that is important. When, when we were discussing this in the E D C, one of the comments that had pinged up during the discussion was the fact that Freeport usually finds a way to get, to get in its own way to prevent stuff from happening. I, for one, am not going to let Freeport get away with this.
All right, sir, thank you, Councilman Pride, do you have anything?
Uh, just that, I just wish we could have, uh, met to discuss other things, such as, you know, educational opportunities, just the simple things, but overall, uh, I think that it's good that they're here, so.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, I'm glad they're here, and so, uh, yeah, that's about it.
Thanks, sir, Councilman Brimich?
I agree one hundred percent with Councilman Kane, uh, bringing up some very valid points, and, uh, I think we need to get this thing moving forward.
Mayor, this is a seven-year tax delay, I just, for instance, they're subject to up to a ten-year, the E D C, uh, recommended seven. Uh, the situation regards to, uh, the last vote on the ordinance, I agree with, was that the, uh, by the state statute was supposed to set it on a regular state meeting, and we had a special call meeting there for, uh, that action became, uh, invalid, and so, uh, we have presented here today, uh, the agreement, uh, that is attached to the ordinance, uh, incorporated within the ordinance, discussed within the ordinance, includes, uh, from the last conversation, last meeting that we had, where this was discussed and passed, uh, air, 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 air honestly. Um, those, uh, four items that we asked for have been included, and they were, uh, we have stuck with the numbers that we requested, uh, for, uh, employees. We have changed a few things to make sure, uh, because Councilman Pena is supposed to be, and I appreciate that, that they're kind of, they're actually good neighbors, that we have put things in place, uh, in this particular agreement, um, that will provide them to, uh, not object or protest the taxes for the abatement, period, we have put things in here that are specific, contrary to other information that says they are responsible for all water connections and all utilities at our rates, that's in here, likewise, uh, it's in here, that they will work, uh, with the city, uh, to promote job hiring within the city, with job fairs, uh, it's in here that, uh, folks in Freeport that are hired will receive appropriate job training to do the job. It's also in here that they will, as good citizens and good neighbors, will, uh, work with the city, uh, to promote the city as well as, we have here, uh, in regards to the number of things that you might talk about, that we discussed, and it's, uh, putting vehicles in berets, putting some type of announcements out, uh, in, uh, big signs and so forth, among their products, um, so those items are in here, as well as the remedies that they don't do what they say they're going to do, and, and we have those legal protections as well. Um, I sat in on at least one of the E D C meetings, I think it was, uh, Councilman Kane, I think it was a joint meeting, the E D C and the council, I don't know how many other meetings the E D C had prior to that as well, uh, but I think this is something good for the city of Freeport, I think, uh, this ordinance, uh, and the agreement, uh, uh, the actual ordinance agreement was reviewed by Park City Attorney, uh, he drafted the city, uh, the ordinance, and we also, Mr. Kelty has sent off the ordinance, as presented tonight to the council, as well as the agreement, as presented tonight to the council, to, uh, our interim city attorney, Wilson Wilson, and they have, uh, said that they are more supportive of the document, not necessarily whether it's good for Freeport, but it is a, a legally binding document, if it's so signed. So saying that, just to report the discussion in regards to public hearing.
Mayor, I have one last question.
Yes, sir. First, do you have a question?
Special one tonight, Dan. Mayor had mentioned here tonight that, um, there's a hundred and thirteen full-time jobs, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Can you explain how those would, uh, transfer every money to be full-time? I mean, looking at the trip, the two-year term time to get the project built, is that right?
Uh, I'm not sure of the exact time for it, but I.
It is, it's, it's, it's not, uh, a two-year term on time, but that, uh, specifically, I want to make sure that we designated the hundred and thirteen, uh, contract employees, with the fourteen permanent employees, that were bonded together, and the definition within the agreement, uh, states that they have to be thirty-five, excuse me, uh, who's that? Page five, uh, excuse me, it's on page, uh, contract employee and current employees, basically means they have to work a man of thirty-five hours in a seven-day week, and for to work in the reinvestment zone, uh, and that's how they're determined.
They have to be filled with that, you know, in six months, not the effective date.
And, once again, this is, what, one thirteen plus fourteen is, no, it's a hundred, it's ninety-nine plus thirteen, so one plus fourteen is a hundred and thirteen, hundred and thirteen together, but that's not also exclusively due to, uh, the additional contractors, or additional third-party affiliates, or any other employees that are hired. Once again, the information is provided to us, council, uh, and then, I think, on the internet as well, in regards to agenda items, say that they're, uh, they're anticipating one of everybody, uh, between, I think, two hundred, two hundred eighty, two hundred sixty, and three hundred twenty. Uh, and they will also, uh, be hiring local drivers to the, uh, International Vectors Association, which has, uh, higher than, as we're all down here in Freeport.
So, uh, again, either full-time or.
The current employees, uh, Volkswagen, um, and current employees, and we, this, employees that are currently, they're at twenty-five hours, both of them working on site.
Um, Mr. Kelty, I just want to let you know that, you know, to Freeport, please, but I say, uh, but welcome you guys, and I love you all, you know, and say, I'm sure you've been around this, this kind of negotiations, more than once in the city, and to all of us, I won't be in any discussion about it, but, uh, I'm very good.
Mr. Robertson, go ahead, since it's, we're in the public hearing aspect, go fix the vote.
All right, I think all, my question is, just getting on the cap, I, I, so.
Hey, give it, dress us for it.
Okay, Mr. Kelty, I wanted to ask you guys, I already talked to you guys about the impact study, but I wanted to address this, you know, this, 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 if we have one or not. That's just getting on the record.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have some research, okay? And if they have one, we're going to look for it, see if we have an impact study, no, we don't, we have one, I get one, and, uh, also, uh, I agree with Mr. Kane, a whole lot of people, whoever has money, I don't agree with, okay? I mainly about Freeport, one hundred percent, but the jobs that you were talking about, two hundred and, a hundred and thirteen full-time, come up to two hundred and forty-six dollars a gallon. But all those jobs, I know you got a contract with International Longshore, you know, because I remember International Longshore, you know, level thirty, been there since nineteen seventy-nine. Those contracts were signed four years ago, in a business league, with B W, B N W, and every other car company that's come into Freeport, so right now, y'all are all on the label with us, in union, because we got in those contracts four years ago. So, y'all in us, just right now, we have none of this for Freeport, that's why I asked about the environmental impact studies and what's going to happen, because I already know who's coming and what's coming, because I'm a part of International Longshore.
Thanks, sir. Any further comments?
I have a last comment, is that, um, again, this is, I, um, want to reemphasize the, uh, the sense of opportunity, value that Freeport has, and certainly, uh, the sense that we want to invite as many, uh, industries to Freeport and as far as people in this community here, as long as we can be, uh, responsible neighbors, good contracts, good neighbors. But, uh, to be reminded, I didn't ask about these supporting documents, on the contracts, and, um, I'm still having a hard time being around that, but we still don't know what the contracts are, what the agreements are, these Volkswagen, and, um, and the, and, 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 and for Freeport. And I'm, I'm just curious, is there any chance that we might go get that, if there's any contracts and a new project?
Make a motion to approve item number ten.
We have a motion from Councilman McCain to approve item number ten, which is the HEDC project economic development between the Freeport EDC and Ida Drive for Resport LLC for the development of Starbucks. Already seconded by Councilman Pena. Is there any discussion needed? If not, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Five oh. Thank you gentlemen. And all those who oppose. Item number eleven, bulk trash door hangers fines. Discussion of possible action. Councilman Pena, Councilman Ryan. Uh, for what item, sir? Let's come up here real quick, just so we make sure it's on the record, man. Thank you.
The only thing I was asking on this, the building of Starbucks, is it, is not, uh, there's no, uh, uh, grant money that was being used for downtown? To, uh, to bring up the downtown area. None of that is going towards Starbucks and not on file, on the blue bar. Just, just step for downtown, right?
I, I don't know if I answered that question, man. Uh, Councilman McCain, you have that?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you, man. Very good. Item number eleven, item number eleven, bulk trash doors, hangers, fines. Discussion of possible action. Councilman Pena, Councilman Ryan.
There, uh, this is the item here. I think, um, the language was the, uh, the bulk trash door hangers, uh, used to, uh, city first and, um, we had a chance to get that over then. So the, uh, we should the city all excuse me to go over that and so.
We have a motion to table, uh, item number eleven. Uh, is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a second from Councilman McCain. Item eleven is, uh, take. Uh, item number twelve, bulk trash, brush and mulch services, dash for scenery and cost analysis, discussion of possible action. Councilman Pena, Councilman Ryan.
Well, I already have documents in this particular item here that I'm hoping that we might give to get some kind of cost analysis as we move forward to, uh, try to solve the brush and mulch services problem that's facing the city as it relates to the bulk trash. I wanted to have that discussion to at least, um, see if, um, we can start defining what the scope of, of the, um, mechanical requirements, the cost requirements, uh, as it relates to the mulch services and the machinery that's going to be required for that as we move into the strategic planning budget, uh, here this summer. And so, um, see if we can, uh, have that discussion and have a possible action on it. I don't know if Mr. Hades has any, uh, opportunity?
So did the thing, did you tell us the city manager, Ben Lynn Jackson? See who would be able to provide any information on the equipment they use out of that?
On this one, I'd also, uh, be interested to see what are, what are our options with the mulch? I think I don't feel like there's going to be a lot of trees in the city for this mulch. So we need to make sure we generate a bunch of mulch. Are we gonna use it or is it, uh,
Sheriff, you understand?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Item number twelve, were you taking?
Well, there'll be any particular action per se to, uh, to instruct the, um, all to, uh, actually provide that information. Sure, machinery and cost analysis. We could formally request that, make that motion.
So we have a motion. Could you state your motion again, sir, or is it?
Uh, specifically the, uh, administration, um, provides the cost analysis, machinery and services, etc., uh, with the council, etc.
Very good. We had that motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
There's a second from Councilman McCain. Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item thirteen, uh, Mr. Olson, you want to read this one? Review of any and all contracts sent to the city of Freeport and Olson, Olson. Consideration of taking possible actions to reveal and enter the city attorney's service for Olson, Olson due to potential conflicts in previous service with city slash EDC. Councilman Pena, Councilman Ryan. Please jog my memory. I think this was on a prior meeting and it was denied. So bring it back up again. Councilman Pena, your, your motion, sir.
Yeah, I wrote this in particular item and, um, simply because, uh, we didn't get a chance to live the contract and discuss that in that manner with the Sherwood.
Actually, Council, I think, I apologize for interrupting, but I think the contract is attached to the, to the agenda, so we, we did have time to see that.
Well, I wanted to bring to mind mostly, number one, Mr. Olson, what, just in the short exchange. So, this is really more of, of the housekeeping that was facilitated, this agreement. And, uh, it was just my understanding, I just wanted to reiterate this point, that, uh, prior to always this agreement, council was supposed to approach and have the opportunity to, uh, weigh in on the decision and for that matter leave the direction to the city. Just the opposite was, uh, so I, I just wanted to bring that up and, uh, see if that, um, matters. Because, you know, what we're looking at with different contracts for, again, I'll point to, um, the jog trail and everything else we're looking at here in terms of other agreements. I, I just want to make sure that we're doing all the process, um, as required by our partner and, um, do my law. And so, it's my understanding that it wasn't. And so I don't know if that requires us to, uh, take a new vote or not, but I wanted to bring that up to council for the consideration and, uh, for the knowledge that, uh, put public ethics to understand that the process is not followed, uh, for the charter. And so I don't know if we have taken motion to, uh, right the ship. I don't know what elementary processes or legal procedures that are required to, to satisfy what the charter requires. And if, uh, Mr. Olson, if you have any information on that, I would be.
It, I, it's fine to say my, the, I agree with the approval of the statute of admission. And that's where the decision came up and then subsequently was brought to council and I believe approved at the last meeting.
Y'all have already taken action?
Yeah. I would say we're good with this one. But again, I firmly, in myself, my personal search of the law, really not in contract, pretty firm. Just laying out, you know, what services we're going to provide, uh, except for their same. But anytime council staff is there, we have the order, which is your services.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, no action to act on thirteen. Item fourteen, let me jog trail regrouped, estimate review, discussing possible action. Councilman Pena, Councilman Ryan. Uh, we do have, uh, can, uh, we have two folks, I think, who want to speak on item fourteen. Ladies first, Mr. Gerard, please.
Hello, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Lisa Gerard and I live at one twenty-one R. S. seventy-four. And I wanted to come and say that I'm against having, uh, a trail right behind the homes in my neighborhood. Um, I would be okay if, and I understand what, uh, Councilman Pena's saying, that the, the current trail ends at the, uh, parking lot where the boat ramp. But if we wanted to continue the trail, go ahead and do like a dog leg or whatever you want to call it and put it on that levee where there's not private residences at that section of the levee. If you put it behind the homes and residential, I believe that it's a safety issue. Right now, there's a lot of joggers and a lot of walkers on the current trail where the river is. But on occasion, we do see people walking along the levee. And I realize that that is, uh, public property. But we have a home and we have a pool right next door. The pool is fenced. There's also, uh, a screen enclosure. But there's kids that roll down the hill, they get on our property, um, and there's other people, not just kids, that will also get on our property. But I believe if you make it more attractive with a jogging trail, it's going to get worse. And our backyard is not very, it's, I measured today and it's, um, thirty-six feet from the end of our driveway to the top of the levee. Um, also, I don't think that we're really maintaining the current trail very well. That, I believe when, uh, Councilman Pena was running her office, I had, uh, texted him and some other people, I can't remember who all, with pictures of, um, the lighting at our current trail. We're not even maintaining that lighting very well. They're not painted. And if you haven't been on the trail in a while, I would, um, ask that you walk along the trail and see how bad it does light look. The, the paint is flaking. There are wires coming out of the lighting. So we're not even maintaining that. Uh, right now, it looks pretty good as far as the mowing goes, but, um, if we have another trail that's more mowing and, you know, I say, let's just, let's just take care of what we've got before we spend more money, uh, basically hurting a neighborhood, a nice neighborhood that is there. Uh, I'm sure there's some other things that I'm forgetting to mention, but I think those are big enough where I would ask that y'all not vote to have the trail right behind our homes.
Thank you, man. Mr. Hayes?
Can I, I, for fourteen, Mr. Gerard? I personally don't see you have any problems with the walking trail. I've been doing that walking trail for about five years. I've never had a close incident where somebody else would take me walking through there. I'm one of the very few that made the whole round. Most people pull over in a parking park and walk from there down here. Some pull over in a parking lot and they walk that way. Very few go all the way across, but I've never had a near miss. I think it's a waste of money and a waste of time. And I don't think anybody took any consideration moving your lives up there. That's not going to be, uh, cheap. So keep that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Pena?
Uh, I, I got something to say.
Sure.
You know, uh, I run the levee. I hate saying it for myself, but the lights are, are working. Uh, ran past the, uh, the river place, the lights right there about the, the walkway going up the hill to the, the river place are working and that was a little bit of shocker, but actually it looks really good. Uh, the lighting, uh, it, it makes the river place look nice. Thanks, uh, I want to thank Mr. Petty for that. Uh, I've ran at night, uh, several times, uh, last week and, uh, it's lit up really good. I mean, I don't, I don't really see, uh, an issue with the lighting. I did want to say, uh, on the, on the side where there is no trail and there's no property, you know, uh, business, no homeowners, uh, from the, from the levee. Uh, I don't know if you, do you know where that's at? It's on the other side?
In the middle section between the two, uh, roads that go over the levee?
Yes, sir. I do think that that should, to have a trail there. Uh, you had, you had spoken about bringing up the levee, uh, at a ninety, uh, at the end of the trail. I do see a safety concern there because the cars that come over, and I know we're going to work on it, the cars that come over can hit somebody. And I've stopped several times, uh, to wait for cars to come over, uh, the hill there. But coming back from the, from the, the bridge over, it'd be nice that way. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a trail and people can see where they're going. You know, the cars can see where they're coming. That's, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Mayor, uh, over the weekend, I spoke with a few of Mr. Gerard's neighbors. All of the one that I spoke with, um, had the same, same feeling about the jog trail as what Mr. Gerard's. And one thing that we haven't taken into consideration is, is lighting and the cost that it would take to improve the lighting up on, or add new lighting up on top of the levee. Um, I also spoke with a young lady that, um, like Mr. Hayes makes a whole circle. And I, I purposely posed the, the question, do you feel unsafe in this area where the parking lot is, where the boat ramp is? And she said, actually, I feel more safe here than I do on the rest of the trail because there's more people there. So with, with, with what I learned this, this weekend from the residents, yeah, I use a small, uh, small size of people that I was able to speak to. I don't know if I know.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes?
I have a few comments here, just looking at my notes here so that I can, uh, attempt to articulate the, uh, the point that I wanted to mention here this evening. This week, this last week, myself, at least, I didn't actually make more trips to the, uh, park. Uh, and, um, just kind of taking a normal poll. Serena, Serena, I had been coming the last week and it was nine people total. And one week period, seven days, seven eight and seven P. M. I took small samples at nine o'clock. Thirty to forty-five minutes down there, there's been five, seven or eight people that use it. And, uh, so I had to make sure that we do a, uh, legitimate, formal, scientific analysis and, and, uh, hopefully, but let me just say this. I have a couple of questions here. Do the different comments that were made by Mr. Gerard and Mr. Gerard, thank you for that tonight. Um, and also just any of his comments. Councilman McCain's. Councilman McCain, I was curious, how many folks did you actually speak with in the, in the neighborhood? Six in the neighborhood. Can we have the names of those people? I just don't know, sir. It was just, um, a fair question I thought. Do I have names? I understand. Let's go. Well, let me back up. And let me, uh, take a, a bird's eye view on this. Um, I'm sure all of us here in the, in city council are familiar with NEMI syndrome. And NEMI syndrome is not in my backyard. And this is probably the biggest obstacle to road and shared quality of life in the community. And you usually find it in more affluent areas of town or the most prime areas of town in terms of amenities and quality of life. Generally, those are the parks and green spaces and water runs. This happens to be all three of those. So if we're looking to try to enhance global quality of life for the masses, the general public versus six or seven residents alone, this is the opportunities and these are the things that we're, we're likely to do to try to help improve global quality of life for the entire city. But I will also say this, I, I actually had a chance to speak with all these individuals that were here, uh, on the trail of those thirty to forty-five minute visits and mornings. And what I found was, is there was probably one third of them were from different cities, from Lake Jackson, Chamonix. But joking aside, they, uh, they just said they loved coming to our parks and this drove me because it's so much better experience. I disagree. And so I was really proud to hear that, so I thought I'd share that. But, um, as Ms. Gerard had mentioned, this is public property and it is, the park is right there. It's all for public property. The, uh, the location and proximity of the walks and the jogs and the strollers, um, are currently at a further distance. We're asking for them to be on the public space of the levee. And, um, you know, when we talk about the, the residents that are against this or some of the common complaints you're hearing are, I don't want them to be in my backyard, not in my backyard. Uh, in fact, there are some places where they don't want sidewalks in their front yard. And so are we going to say, hey, we're not going to put sidewalks in certain streets in more neighborhood, you see, or do you? Because there's certain people in certain streets that don't want somebody walking in their front yard. And, hey, we're just getting down that conversation. Or for that matter, alleys, I can't believe there were people, general public people walking in our alley. It's our, I don't know. It's not this public space. The second point that was brought up tonight was the maintenance of the current trail and the lighting. Let me just tell you. The lighting, all of the jogging trail, they all work. Thank you, committee. They all work. Now, they may have some champagne on the poles, um, they may have some of the plates and the wires not covered, but they are working. But I will also say this, there's, uh, you shouldn't stop with trying to make something better and safer, um, because a couple of light bulbs. Because if we use that logic, right now, the improvements that the EDC and many residents before, and now we have tons of guests coming to the city enjoying, is for the downtown fountains, for the downtown festival park or memorial park. And, you know, if the argument is, let's not do anything more because the lights are not working, I'd wait for that, those lights to be working. Um, we would never have the maintenance that we enjoy now on the downtown park, the downtown park. Um, it was, Ms. Patricia? I see her out there all the time attending to the smaller bits. And I see Lance's group out there, uh, working on the lights and on the benches. And I appreciate that. Now, there's a schedule now. I really appreciate that the fountain is maintained. And I just say that here we are, we're maintaining these parks. We are maintaining these parks. And there's a couple of light bulbs. And so the same thing, I'll say, we can make these improvements because it's already budgeted for. Mr. Hayes said it's a waste of money to boil such budgets and initiatives.
Is there a motion, sir?
Well, let me just say this, this is a quality of life and a safety of life issue. And, um, I think we can get this down and we'll add that much to the experience for our residents and for our guests.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, well, I have one question for that motion. Is that, Mr. McCain, did you have a chance to look at those, uh, estimates? Were you okay with those estimates? Was there any particular estimate that you were leaning toward?
Let's make a motion and we'll have further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we reroute the levee jog trail as described in the map that we had at the last meeting. Pull up the graphic if we need to, but basically along the levee, so, uh, pedestrians can have safer.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Second, Councilman Ryan. Councilman Pena, you have a couple more comments?
Yeah. Do.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how those votes can come to, but I, I would like for you to, uh, consider at least just, uh, doing one side, uh, the, the area where there's, uh, no, uh, no houses on, at least just that, that side. To, you know, uh, make your motion to that.
So we have an amendment request for Councilman Ryan to Councilman Pena. Councilman Pena, uh, your stance, sir?
Uh, I guess that question is, is it worth that? I just go from, uh, uh, where the road begins, where the community house was, uh, the, the trail will start on top of that, uh, top of the hill there and go to the other side where the fixie house is at.
So now you, now you, now that you reach out, is that, that part not going?
Uh.
You're talking about having it run between the two entries?
Yeah, run between the two entries only. I don't know about, I, I don't know what your thoughts are of, of having the trail go up ninety degrees. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's the thing that I, um, I'll disagree that we need to have it on that levee, on that portion of the park. Um, but in terms of negotiating traffic, um, so that's the, uh, that's where the question becomes, how do we negotiate the traffic safely?
Let me ask you this, Councilman. Uh, Pena, are you willing to, uh, entertain, uh, Councilman Ryan's energy motion?
I'm just trying to understand.
I just, uh, well, the understanding is, uh, they, I'm.
The understanding is, I don't understand.
Excuse me, sir. Your understanding is, is that it would not run behind the levee, uh, behind the houses on Ryan's landing, but would stop, start on the road opposite from where the community house used to be.
Yes.
One section of, uh, where mulch parking, pull up the trailer, which is.
Yes.
You willing to accept that motion?
I'm sure I understand the route.
It's, it's, it's a section of levee that, uh, is between the two bungalows.
The question I want to have is.
It's a discussion issue, it's just, do you want to tip that amendment or not?
Well, I'm just trying to understand how do we get to that spot? Is it basically, because the whole point really here is that we're definitely negotiating, the, the pedestrians are not in the road. That's really what it is. So if we're, if we're not looking to try to help the pedestrians jog, uh, through the boat, boat ramp traffic, uh.
Are you willing to accept the amendment to your motion, sir?
Well, last time, the, well, last time.
Well, I hope we're, we're going to get an answer from you, uh, is, are you willing to accept the amendment? If not, I'm going to proceed with the motion.
So the amendment is between those two roads. And I'm just curi- curious though, how do we get, how do we get up there?
Walk up the levee. Uh, okay.
You know, I, I would just ask, uh, public works to put in, uh, some, uh, I believe they used to have mirrors there in the past so incoming traffic can see. And, uh, just ask for them to place those mirrors back or in, in a better way and also so the, uh, citizens can also see the mirrors. And that, that, that's as much as, uh, I, I, I see fit for this.
I have one question.
Real quick, uh, I want to try to say to keep this, uh, some, some of those votes, we have the amendment to your original motion. I don't believe that was second. And I shoot that because you requested amendment. So are you willing to accept the amendment to your motion, sir?
Is there a chance that we can still do, to discuss this or do I have to accept that?
You don't have to accept it either, Council.
I want to, I want to.
At our, at this point, I want to be certain of opening up for discussion later, uh, if you're willing. So, uh, so very good. So the amended motion, the true square, is that you're now moving that the city Freeport, um, put forth, uh, the jogging, the material on a jogging trail between, I don't know where it's going, community house road or.
Well, I, I would, I would be the amendment on one contingency.
Well, you either agree or you don't, sir, so.
He already said yes.
You can't, pretty contingency?
No, not, not tonight. So we can discuss this, like, technically, with the amendment, as, as you say, as you're making the motion. So somebody else can. I'm in your motion, just like.
Yeah.
I'm in.
For the sake of progressing the discussion, so allow Mr. Pena to, to.
You accept that amendment? So make sure the motion is accurate, that the amended motion made by Councilman Pena. You accept that amendment, so make sure the motion is accurate, that the amended motion made by Councilman Penny and requested amended by Councilman Mariah is that, uh, the levee material be put on there through contract with the company on seven, ten, four, between the, basically the entrance road and the, uh, ingress and, uh, egress, some of the roads, the above the levee and over the levee, uh, by the, uh, T-Gu. Do you understand that motion? Do you second that motion?
I second.
All right, now, let's see.
Um, you, uh, Councilman Penny, you obviously spoke with more people that use the, the jogging path than I did. Of those, I'm curious, how many are like Mr. Hayes that make the whole circle? And how many go for a hundred and fifty?
I'm not sure that anybody can go full circle. So I'm curious how Mr. Hayes makes a full circle on that, on that, because as it is, because the rest of my answer, because there's no way to make a full circle on the levee. As it currently stands, because there are, there are many private residents that are approaching upon that eastern of the levee.
Typically, the full circle is, uh, uh, Councilman Penny, uh, how you do it is you run around this and you go across the bridge, then you get on Avenue A, or you get on Front Street and follow it. And that's what, you know, I used to do when I was a chef, and I used to go to ninety eight five, so that, that's how you go around, because the levee was closed off down this end of the park for years and years and years. That's like, that's what some of the sets is.
My, my concern is, I, I feel like the majority of the people that use the jogging path are going from one part to one part, turn it back.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that they use the trail. Um, I'm just trying to, yeah, it's safety.
All right, well, if they're going for it, for it. I appreciate that, gentlemen, and I'm gonna call a question, because I think we've had a lot of discussion. We have a motion, uh, that's been made by Councilman Penny, a second by Councilman Mariah, that's amended, uh, for a certain section.
May I amend it?
Sorry, Senator. Yes, sir.
Now, we, say about the levee, I jogged on that levee. On one, three, four, was it, ran all the way around that levee. Before the gates got on that, we ran across that levee, all the way down there from the park, from the reception, well, we got the new, uh, uh, community house up here. All the way around that park, all the way to the foot of that bridge, we never went on Avenue A or Avenue, uh, Front Street. We always ran that levee, all the way down there, then go across that bridge. Only problem we had was crossing the intersection with the boat ramp. We always ran on that levee, but y'all gave the levee away. So when it all comes down to it, y'all changed the path of that, that, that jogging path. Every person, every track coach we had at this high school, others run that mile relay, off that, from that high school, all the way around that levee, every morning, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, sir. I went to distance running, they had me on fat man, I was the second player. It's called the who we laid. Uh, item number fifteen, um, I don't know if it's Luke.
Discussing public, this process for, um, all the many issues that come up for the city, this is something I said about a, about a year ago. We started talking about having, um, manage social media presence and, and for that matter, a managed press release process. And for that matter, a press release person, just so that, you know, we're, we're, we're going through a growth phase and, um, the council has always had to ask the attorney for some guidance on this and for that matter, be deliberate, uh, internally, and then we decide what that, what that, uh, press release is gonna be. But in light of the series of press releases that had not been released and instead in their place, we had individual, individual commentary substituting, um, I wanted to make sure we brought this up because the lack of a press release process and a press release policy has invited a whole bunch of confusion and suspicion and distrust of the city whole. And, uh, I wanted to make sure that we at least brought it to the table here this evening so that we can, um, address that and potentially, um, take that, take some action so that we can put that policy in place.
Would you like to make a motion, sir?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, uh, that the, the city council here instructs the city staff to, uh, uh, city, uh, policy for press releases.
To bring back to council to review?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, is there a second?
I'll take it.
There's a second from Councilman Mariah, is there any further discussion? All of those prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion secured, thanks, gentlemen. Item number seventeen. Gentlemen, for the charter, all of the, uh, council members present must vote, it's silence for Robert Wilson's board is a sent. So, item number seventeen, council, continue the policy discussion in possible action, Councilman Penny, Councilman Mariah.
Um, Mayor, first of, Councilman Mariah, thank you for, uh, helping us on this here, knows that these issues here are important in the public and the.
Get along with it, Councilman, come on, let's, let's move on.
Mayor.
Grandstanding, G R A N D S T A N D I N, grandstanding.
Just, I'm calling this, I'm just, I'm not my standing, sir.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'm asking here, that we have a, a policy for the agenda, and this was brought up to me by residents in the community, um, P M, C C F, that they would like to participate in how the agenda is formulated, when they come to speak to the council, that they might be able to, um, recommend items to be on the discussion for the public. And so I just thought that might be something to add to the, uh, the current agenda policy, just.
Where ordinance is a class, but this particular.
Yeah.
This particular agenda that we have here was a ordinance, it was a class, about.
So we can, what did it add to that particular talking point to the discussion that we might be able to modify?
Well, let me ask you this, is there a motion to modify this? Uh, you're gonna rather have, before we have discussion on it, I'd like to see a motion. And I'd like to see what you're trying to move for, but I don't see any documentation other than a motion.
Yeah, and this is one of those, uh, esoteric talking points here where we're trying to understand what the language is saying. And I want the, for the council to be, the opportunity to discuss it so that we can, uh, help shake it together. I'm not sure, just, you know, that here is.
Let me suggest, next time, uh, just put discussion only then without possible action, except if you have a draw for the board. Uh, you make the motion, for example, we have discussion, it's a relax. If you want to have an open and great discussion about it, have the discussion, but you also have it on the possible action, so do you mean it's not a motion for tonight?
No, we made the motion that we amend for, uh, agenda policy ordinance.
Specifically.
Specifically by allowing the residents to, um, provide an agenda request for the following meeting.
Mayor, I mean, please, please.
So currently, if residents make a request for the following meeting, um, that's open to the government, the current policy for council members to actually make that request, formal agenda item.
So, let's get a second, first man, thank you, Ms. Nancy, and you've already put out the one. Uh, is there a second to Councilman Penny's, uh, motion, if I got it correctly, that he wants to, uh, move to amend ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two six five seven to include, uh, the citizens of preboard, residents of preboard, to be able to place items on the agenda? Does that suit your position, sir? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I got motion bills. Ms. Nancy, uh, motion filled, you should be able to have discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, please, come on. Item number seventeen.
Yes, sir. Is that, the citizens come up here, they, you know, we, we have a meeting, and we ask you guys certain things, or we discuss certain things. And of course, y'all aren't allowed to say anything, and then afterwards, we never hear yay or nay, or hey, what are we gonna do or answer our questions? And I would like it to see, uh, where, after the minute y'all go back, you know, on the following meeting, then y'all gonna answer some of these citizens' questions. To get answers, and I think that's more transparency than anything. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item is item number eighteen, okay? Let's council, any other comments on, uh, the motions on council agenda? Let's proceed, council eighteen, the same council tournament, discussion and possible action, Councilman Penny, Councilman Mariah.
Yeah, I brought this onto the agenda just because, um, number one, we were, it was discussed, um, a lot of month ago, we, uh, tried to make sure we have this particular tournament this year, this last week, last couple of weeks, uh, it's getting complex, we tried to organize the, uh, detailed list presented to, uh, to the staff. So at this point, until we hopefully have those meetings this week, um, we might be able to run it on next agenda, so.
So that item is passed, sir, thank you, no action. Item number nineteen, city employee policy handbook, dash discussion and possible action, Councilman Penny, Councilman Mariah.
This particular is, um, agenda item, Mayor, I had on the, uh, agenda. And, um, I wanted to highlight. We go back to the discussion this way, city employee handbook, I, um, I wanted to touch on the section, uh, really does, really do the best, uh, session. What I'm trying to identify is the actual section in the, uh, policy.
While you're doing that, Councilman, item number still on nineteen, I was gonna try to jump to twenty, soccer field, but, uh, how much longer?
We can do that, yeah, this is still.
I will jump to item number twenty, soccer field lighting estimates, national discussions and possible action. Uh, Mr. Manning, do you have a comment on? On nineteen, if we get back to nineteen, I'll call upon you, sir, thank you. Uh, Councilman Penny, Councilman Mariah.
Yeah, we've got the three, uh, estimates, uh.
Item number twenty, soccer field lighting estimates, discussion and possible action.
Yes, we got one from Penny's electric, electric cool off, and hope, and hope electric. I wanted to see if, uh, what staff would recommend, uh, what Mr. Petty or Mr. Kilty would.
Actually, we are already proceeding with that, um, I believe, last question, if I'm wrong, we went to pick up the generator today. Tomorrow morning. Um, and that's already been approved, we have an electric, um, line out to do the work, and so that, I think, is progressive.
Do you think further, Councilman Mariah? Nope. Back to nineteen, city employee policy handbook, Manning, would you like to make a comment, sir?
Yes, sir. That's 'cause I get an open record request today, based on what, uh, Officer Mo, he said on social media, and you know social media is devil, like you say all the time.
It is.
Well, devil was in detail when Officer stated, and I didn't even know if this is a common city hand practice, since you got the name, that you would target residents driving down the road to get a bigger impression. This came up off some, well, what we did, what we doing is putting over cars for mine and fraction, just to see if they got to make a front. Well, since then, that's targeting, you're the target yourself, so, you know, uh, is it common practice for the police to target?
I, I would say this, uh, I love that case, I was from the first turn, but, uh, what I would suggest, Manning, if you had this video in your possession, please make a copy, allow us to make a copy, and we'll send it through the appropriate personnel for review. And if it, uh, requires a comment, state to council, we will release it.
All right, thank you, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you, make sure, yeah, just put it in an envelope or something like that. Very good, Councilman Penny?
Yes, I pulled up the, the language of the ordinance here, that it's not a drug policy.
Where are we, please, sir?
Item number nineteen, in terms of the, uh.
No, where, where are we, the public policy, or the personal policy?
The, uh.
Section, is that what section, please, sir? You have, you have the personal policy there, are you kind of?
Um, I'm gonna have my screen here, I've seen the, uh, the language that looks on, uh, one of the reports we use.
Can you find that in the policy handbook so we can all follow along?
I can read it if it helps.
Page three, one, dash three, section three, point zero five. Say it again, please? So, page three, dash three, so. All right, did you read that, three, dash three?
Uh, basically, the city's policy clearly states that there's a, uh, zero tolerance drug alcohol policy for city staff. A violation of this policy will result in community termination. And if any particular resident, excuse me, uh, if any, we could say different staff, his rent is selected.
Which, which section, Jeff, because I could excuse, Councilman Penny, what page is that? I'm not looking at, on three, dash three.
Um, I'm just looking off my notes here at this one, sir.
Okay, do you, do you have section number on your note?
I don't, sadly, no.
Thank you. What page is that, sir? Five, dash six, thank you.
Just trying to make sure, um, I think I want a drug, a drug policy, uh, discipline reaction is, if there's a random test, you would just get, if, uh, an employee, uh, of the city fails that test, they are terminated, is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Uh, Mrs. Dale, if you're gonna, sorry, Mrs. Dale, if you're gonna address, please come to the mic. Can you say your question?
The city does.
Hold on one second. Can you say your question, please, sir?
Yeah, if under a, a random, uh, drug test, there's a failure by the city's employee, are they automatically terminated from the city policy?
Not necessarily. Because, I think you offer the employee the chance to seek help, I guess you could say, in the policy, um, the way it is. Based on the policy that we have, they refuse the random drug test for reasons suspicious, and then refuse the test, and it's automatically terminated.
It was also, hold on one second, audience, please, let's keep it quiet. All right, does she want to make an open comment to the mic? Thank you, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, that we do have a separate drug policy that states these different things, it depends on the test, if they have the prescription, because not all the time, do you test positive? Because it's, you have prescriptions, they have prescriptions, and they. Because it's, you have prescriptions, and they have prescriptions, and it is not considered a valid test. So you can't just say if you test, you failed drug test, you're terminated automatically, because there's extenuating circumstances for each individual, and we have to take into consideration those circumstances before termination, if it is.
And so, it was also advised, I was also advised by previous city attorney and, uh, Mr. Wilson, want to comment? In fact, I get a city name brand discretion in regard to that kind of decision. So if there is no prescription?
If there is no prescription, like you said, if that's the city manager's discretion, it's not, it won't be followed through any of the tests. Yeah. On a case-by-case basis.
It may sound like we're talking about, because the scope of all theory, this one policy we're talking about is not a crime. What I suggest is, uh, to have citizens, people take a look at it, all that sort of, or, 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 particularly, just to make sure we're doing things, a lot of stuff, even if I say it's a law. When it comes to how you deal with those kinds of issues.
And especially as a DOT test.
Absolutely. So, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and then come back, maybe with an update, and report it the next day, and in eight weeks, and that's the third, I suggest. I appreciate that. Ready?
Comment on drug policy, International Longshore Union Board, great board, first drug policy, you pay thirty days. Test, no pay, thirty days, second time, we have them, right there, third time, terminated, from the fourth, fifth quarter, and International Longshore Union. Now, we have policemen that have to take these drug tests, with the newspaper, who is at the set, okay? So you got officers on the street doing drugs, okay? It's about to kill somebody, he failed the drug test, he failed the drug test, is that his discretion? That man right there, is that his discretion to keep that person on the city that has a drug habit? We just ran out of our chief, okay? In open rates request that I got, concerning this disciplinary action, drugs, and Kilty never stayed there, okay? So at this point, how many more officers in this police department doing drugs? Y'all, I don't want to say. You gotta do something about this drug policy, because that's endangering the lives of every citizen in the city. These people who use drugs, operate these equipment around here, endanger lives of people. That's my excuse for it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pinia, council, excuse me, council Pinia, do you think further?
No, I, um, I, I agree with this rule on, um, how they brought that.
So no action taken as of nineteen, uh, I, ladies and gentlemen, we will now go into work, uh, session. Uh, the city councilman delivered any items, this has been the work session, council Pinia Ward A, councilwoman Goff.
Uh, yeah, I wanted first, um, 'cause I've been doing here, uh, all the comments that I had, a little, uh, um, should tell came up, but, uh, it's, uh, comments I've got, so I'll come to that, uh, show this, um, comment, uh, emails, gets sent in, concerned about his safety, uh. I'll be sure, try to find those emails, I know that they were sent in mass to all the council, so, uh, I'll make sure it's on. Thank you. Uh, this remain, I had, I came up here, and I just want to make sure that, um, the review, the performance review for Mr. Kilty, city manager, is scheduled in August, but, the, uh, it's not supposed, it's not, uh, required to be in August. If there are infractions that arise, and there is no hidden agenda, except for fairness, transparency, and accountability, that's my number one. Um. This council, you came up and asked for the report on Brad Stec to, uh, be public, and I think the discussion for the Brad Stec's report to be, uh, discussed in public, um. If that is a pleasure of the council to do that, I support that. Just sort of monitoring him in this evening as well, um, I'm supporting the, uh, also, thank you, sir. Sorry, I have another comment here from Mr. Adam Morris, and, uh, I just want to respond that there's no disinformation. But everything that I do, I make sure that it's actually already open, and for that matter, there's not some situation support. Um, because at the beginning of this eleven hour meeting, I hope all the speakers have, only council members, and in presence for all regular meeting sessions, and for that matter, yeah. Um, excuse me, I'm looking at my notes here, making sure that I'm as thorough as possible. Yeah, this, this information campaign is, is not, it's just the opposite, it's not sharing public information. I, I want to recommend to the public that, uh, to take the, whatever reports out of the newspaper, the local newspaper, and social media, and, uh, they're not misleading, uh. And there are, there are some corrections that I'll be sending to people inside when I have, take a correction here, mayor, you would have said, that is, I'm sorry, so I'll be doing that. I think the last comment was that we have, you know, I guess the, um, the responsibility here as councilmen to have our own personal thoughts, I think, that was a talking point to have, councilman Mariah, and for that matter, all councilmen to have their own personal thoughts. I think we all do, bring our own personal thoughts and our own, um, agendas. Number seven here was Miss Oldham, uh, she had asked for a supporting office, and, um, the strategy, uh, to get, uh. Again, I want to say that I'm, I'm just trying to stand up, and bring these issues, uh, over here. Um, I will also say that we can disagree as councilmen, but we should afford each other the ability to speak to one another, exchange those thoughts, that's, that's really my homie of us here, that's the discussion, that is the discourse, the discourse for everybody to speak fairly and openly. There was a comment that, um, I had asked, or that I, um, made a comment that I want to remove, Mr. Rimage, Mr. Kilty, Mr. Pass, Mr. Oldham, and, um, I want to make sure I clarify that, because Miss Oldham is correct, I say I would pursue the removal of anyone who personally attacked and insulted citizens. As at the time of the discussion with Mr. Rimage, Miss Oldham had confessed to me that she had been, uh, the victim of, of those attacks, but I'm sure. Um, so I take numbers with trying to frame it, that, uh, I'm not interested in working with anyone, that's just the opposite, I'm interested in working with everybody, so long as there's transparency, fairness, and accountability. I'll leave it at that, to the public comments, last thing I'll say is, is that, um, there are a couple of issues here, ceding to my, uh, direction on the left street, um, and, um, there's a couple of direct questions that I'll add, I'll wait for the rest, such that I can.
Council, okay?
Thank you, mayor. First off, I would like to thank the council tonight. We actually had good conversation, we had decisions that were made for the best of the city, in my opinion, instead of, uh, the shenanigans that have been going on. I'm sorry for everybody that is sitting at home, doing interviews and talking, but they did not get to witness what they have grown up to. I encourage council to continue, uh, working in the matter in which we are, now, that means that, uh, Mr. Kilty, in the majority of the parks in the city, where the playgrounds are. Went around last week, looked at them, and quite a few of them had weeds and grass that were growing up, almost Shanghai, in the, in the playgrounds. Where they have a quarter around it, they have the grass, or the weed fabric down, and they have the mulch sitting on top. Majority of them don't have any mulch, or have a quarter of what should be. Almost everyone that's on that, has abundant amount of weeds and grass. See if we can get that back on our priority list, to get that safe and clear, so that it gets that, uh, safe and better ways, but absolutely, that's all.
Make sure, council T, council Mariah?
Uh, no, uh, I had raised a lot of, uh, citizens' concerns, uh, to Mr. Kilty, and, uh, they've all been taken care of, the majority of them. So thank you, Mr. Kilty, and thank you, uh, Matt's, uh, Public Works, for addressing those issues, and, uh, it works.
Same, I've, um, dressed up things this week with, uh, Mr. Kilty, and, uh, got it taken care of, so I want to, for the second time, I do want, I got two added voices today, uh. My son and I are sitting on our, uh, sit on the porch this morning, and I got a frantic call from my mother, said, come quick, something's wrong with your dad. Um, my dad had a really bad accident this morning, Chief Motley, I want to commend you and your E S, EMS team for a very quick response. Uh, he ended up with, uh, twenty-seven stitches in his face and twenty-eight in his hand, so, uh, I just, again, your, your guys were very professional, very calming, and, uh, knowing that they're there, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And the other one is Lance, kudos to you and your department in this heat, your, your, your people are, are working very hard, and it's showing, please pass it on from, uh, myself and the council, that, uh, we appreciate your hard work up there.
Indeed.
That's all, ma'am.
Mr. Kilty?
Um, I don't have anything other than just reminding folks that we have a fitness coming up, and I'll report it to you later. Um, and we are, uh, in the budget season, and, um, I do have a calendar that I will use, but I'll get that out tomorrow.
All right, sir, uh, I appreciate you and your administration putting on the strategic plan, uh, committee, or meeting that we had, uh, I wish I was hungry, I'd have taken more, but, uh, there's, there, I appreciated that, and I think some strong comments were made by council, I think you have a, a budget, uh, that, uh, when we get to that, to the point, I think we have a budget we can be proud of, there are going to be some changes, there are going to be some redirection, and there's probably going to be some repulse, but, uh, I'm sure you folks, that council's working on that, and I think the administration, under Mr. Kilty's leadership, and Kathy, and, uh, everybody out there, are working their toes off to get this done. So thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Fissal left, what I was gonna tell him was that, uh, we will allow his requests, he's made in the past, to go through, that fellow there, uh, Mr. Olson will look at it, Mr. Duncan has looked at it, he generated a letter, uh, which is something to care for, but, uh, we'll get the benefit of the doubt from serving under Mr. Olson, uh, put his, uh, eyes on it, to make a determination, and get involved, I believe, uh, from some of his prior comments of right wing issues. Uh, with that perspective, any department heads that need to, uh, have a conference? I don't believe so, sir.
Oh. Quick question, Mr. Kilty, will city hall be open tomorrow? I'm sorry, will city hall be open tomorrow?
City hall will be open tomorrow, we actually had some issues with the, uh, AC today, and I'd like to recognize the city staff, uh, for sticking it out this morning, in about ninety degree temperatures in some of the offices, and, um, I faced some of that, you've made a decision to close it this afternoon, um, and we did have, uh, hunting this afternoon, and I just had a knock from Mr. Petty that, uh, we were back working, and it should be cool, uh, tomorrow.
Very good, anything else?
I just wanted to, I wanted to tour the O A funny building, but, uh, I'll talk to Mr. Kilty later on that.
Very good, sir. Who were y'all called when you went through there? Focus department, I can't remember, the Dolphins?
Dolphins.
Dolphin. Thank you. Um, anything else? Uh, what do you, I'm, you got, you got, sir, three? Who are they, correct?
Uh, the first one here is, uh, usually Kilty, there is, uh, a water leak in street damage over on Eleventh Street, between the seven hundred and twenty-six, one, one, seven hundred and twenty-six and seven twenty-two.
Are you, are you, are you?
Yes, sir, on seven twenty-six and seven twenty-two, Eleventh.
Okay, sir.
And then also, this question is for Ms. Roman, if, um, I was curious, um, about the five hundred block of West Rock Street, it looks like there's three homes for being, I'm getting a bottle of milk, and I was curious if they had been permitted.
We can answer that.
We actually do have three active permits together.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Uh, that was what I kind of mentioned. Um. I have another question here for, for Chief, and I'll take them offline, because I don't want to, uh, ask any question, so. It's eight, three seconds, and, um, I'll give it to you. And, uh, not, not these, Mr. Kilty, we have those, we have those mold reports, um, inspections done for, for second, third, fourth.
I might actually just ask Mr. Petty, you actually got the initial report back, we have, uh, the relegation, on the proposal from, uh, I don't know, yes, any further chance to, Jan?
I can go over the secret.
It's probably supposed to keep over the secret.
Yep, sir.
And as soon as I do get that over with, I will send them off.
I send that to you.
But as the stands here tonight, still, there's no, there's no mold wrestling report?
That's correct. There is no mold wrestling on the first, third floor. And, and mold remains, um, missing, issues, although it is, um, kind of more of a problem, I'm just saying. And there's no.
Cause we did test every single office, and it's all.
There are no staff that, and they.
That's correct.
Sorry? All staff, all staff is on the third floor.
But when you guys on the first floor, there's no issue? There was no issue when you guys, before you moved to the third floor, no issues in terms of staff, having any kind of?
There were complaints, that's actually why I didn't want to. Actually, that's a complaint, or what caused that, I was just, uh, taking action, we did, to test.
Yeah, I remember that conversation, that was curious, which that, that was one, too, I remember we also said, that before you go to third, make sure that it's also safe, so, hopefully these tests are also, will be, will be good.
Anything else, sir?
Um, Mr. Kilty, what was your last, say?
I'm sorry?
You were gonna respond some more for the last comment?
No, I, I can. All right, with that, we will now go into closed session, uh, we want to executive session regarding, hey, uh, consultation, but, council, by the legal advice, county, and action, opinion, and content, related litigation, writing out, uh, connections with the three eighty agreement between the city and Brad Stec's LLC, and related legal issues, deliberations about real property leased in, uh, personnel matters, city manager contracts, city manager recent job performance, and board of protection government organization, chapter five, five one, section five, five one, point zero seven one, verses two, five, five one, point zero seven two, and five, five one, point zero seven four. Council, is there any objection to the staff, Mr. Kilty, and will Betty stay in? Here, none, council, is there any, uh, objection, is it Mr. Barrow?
He was there before.
The Barrow, uh, is there any objections, Barrow, I mean, Barrow, I mean? Okay, with that, uh, if you wait first?
I would prefer to stay out of all of that.
Yes, correct. Yes, we'll ask you to use yourself, uh, or to step out, oh, if you wait outside, please, sir, we'll, we'll be right away, thank you. Oh, you got to say. Will you just wait out?
No, I don't.
Well, I don't. Taking a nap, so now we'll go back to Facebook Live, so I don't know how long it's waiting. They're glad he's leaving right now.